Good evening and welcome to a meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, October 7th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Here.
Vice President Fiamara.
Here.
President Finn.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and Deputy Corporation Counsel Joseph Lupo. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Please, I remove the caps. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Kerry. Welcome, everyone, to our first meeting of October. We'll begin with the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Brendan. Good evening and thank you, everybody, for being here again tonight. I'd like to start out by congratulating the Ancient Order of Hibernians on another successful Irish Day. The weather was perfect and the parade and festival were extremely well attended. Thank you to our CSEA, our Police and Fire Departments, all the personnel from the city that came out and facilitated what was a safe and enjoyable day. This weekend is the city's 27th Annual Fall Festival in Kennedy Plaza. It runs from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on both Saturday and Sunday and features rides, an expanded wine and food tent, and dozens of local artists and craft vendors. The Children's Costume Parade from Rec Center to Kennedy Plaza will take place at noon on Saturday. For more information, visit longbeachmy.gov/fall. In regards to Fall Festival, we are also keeping a close eye on some weather predicted for Sunday. The festival is rain or shine unless, of course, there is a potential for hazardous conditions. We will keep everyone posted on the city's website and social media platforms if the weather poses a threat to the festival. Monday is Columbus Day. In recognition of the holiday, City Hall and the Magnolia Center will be closed. The Rec Center and ICE Arena, however, will remain open. Buses will run on the holiday schedule, and there will be no East End sanitation pickup. Again, no, no East End sanitation pickup. I want to thank all of the residents who attended one or more of the last three parking meetings that were held over the past week. Parking in the city is a decades-old challenge, but we're hopeful that with so many engaged residents, we'll be able to devise solutions that will help make a difference. If you have not already done so, please visit longbeachmy.gov/parkingplan to complete our survey before it closes this Friday. It is very important that people fill this out. It helps guide the consultants on what really can be done and what the residents really would like to see in the city as far as parking. We expect our consultants will come back to us in early December with a draft plan, and we will take that draft plan back to the public for input and feedback. Also earlier this month, the City of Long Beach received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, of the United States and Canada, marking the fourth consecutive year the city has earned this recognition. This award, together with the Moody's Upgrade of the city's bonds and bond anticipation notes in September of this year, serves an independent and objective endorsement of the city's strong financial management, responsible budgeting, transparency, and overall fiscal health, endorsements from two of the most respected and internationally-recognized organizations in the field of public finance. This was awarded with two years under the tax cap, one of which was 0%, and with an understanding of our conservative budgeting utilizing fund balances if expectations are not met. Congratulations belongs to our excellent financial staff and the Comptroller's Office for another job well done. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge that today marks the two-year anniversary of the horrible events of October 7th, 2023. We pray for continued progress towards peace and a return home for the remaining hostages. With that, I will conclude the City Manager's Report. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, Dan. I think you share in the congratulations that everyone gave. You did, you worked really hard on the budget. You worked really hard all year, and I think the rewards are paying off, so thank you much, very much for the hard work.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to bring up something. It's not, you know, I can't bring it up. It's just streets and dogs.
Oh, go ahead, yeah. Of course.
Thank you. Lately, I've been walking around the streets and I've noticed that the grassy areas on, like, Neptune Boulevard and stuff like that, they're drying out. We've had a dry summer, which is good for the beach, not good for the grass. And I don't think there's really much that can be done about it, but I also noticed that we used to have a lot of signs out that said, you know, curb your dog, don't have your dog, go here. And we actually had, which was really great, we had doggy bags so that people who didn't show up with them could take them. Those signs are now, most of them are gone and they're dilapidated, and they don't have any bags in them and stuff like that. And I'm wondering if we can look into that and see if we can start replacing them because that's, you know, it's bad enough, we don't have any water for the grass, but when you combine it with the dogs and stuff like that, it just makes it look pretty bad. So, Dan, if you could just look into that.
I'll look into that. I think, as a dog owner, I think pet owners should be responsible pet owners and clean up after their dogs and carry the bags with them, but the city should look at what we could do to make things better. I will actually tap onto that a little bit. I was going to put this in my City Manager Report, but there are signs at the boardwalk and the beach saying, "No dogs allowed" on the boardwalk. Consider that, you noticed that sign, and we will be doing much more enforcement. I've talked to the Police Commissioner about it. You know, it's unfortunate that you still see dogs every day on the boardwalk, and me, I'd love to have my dog on the boardwalk, but it's, you know, it's not fair to the rest of the residents. And if people, you know, pet owners can be responsible and follow the rules of the city, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. All right, let's get on with the fun.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a software agreement to upgrade the city's Municity System.
This item would authorize me to enter into a one-year agreement for software maintenance, support, and licensing for the Municity software utilized by our Building Department, Tax Department, and City Clerk's Office. The agreement is just over $20,000 for the year, which is $2,500 more than our last agreement, which was signed in 2021. So it's not much of an increase if you look at it year over year. It was not brought before the Board before because it was under $20,000 prior. ICC Community Development Solutions is a sole-source provider for this platform, having acquired the previous provider, Software Consulting Services. I have Kerry here from the City Clerk's Office, and I have Scott here from the Building Department if there are any further questions. Scott may be able to answer a little bit more than Kerry on this one.
Kerry's gonna wear two hats today.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the council?
All right, I'm not sure.
But when we entered into the contract in 2021, we kept the same price until now?
It was held for four years.
Which is not bad.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Any other question from the council? Questions from the public, comments from the public? All right, okay, you're off the hook on that one hat, Kerry. All right. Let's close that, then.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Okay, so this item is similar to ones we've done before that have come up in the past. We need to do a budget resolution because this is in the Water Department. And this item authorizes the transfer of funds to cover the payout of vacation accruals for the Water Department employees. This is allowed as per the city contract with CSEA in Section 8-1.3, where they can cash up to a week's vacation per employee and work it. So it's approximately $8,500, which will be transferred from the contingency budget to contingency/termination pay.
Thank you.
Okay, questions?
Dan, is this just from one person or is this over the?
I believe this is two people.
Two people. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the council? Questions from the public? Okay, thank you, we'll close that.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to retain an appraisal consultant for real property valuation services.
Okay. This resolution seeks to retain the Standard Valuation Services, that's the name of the company, to perform valuation consulting, trial-ready appraisals, and expert testimony at a cost not to exceed $25,000. These services are being sought in connection with pending litigation, so there are limitations about what can be discussed without going into executive session. But I do have Joe Lupo here available to answer any questions you may have that he can answer that doesn't regard to litigation.
Questions from the council?
Joe, this includes the expert testimony, you do all court appearances and stuff like that?
It's supposed to. So, yeah, I mean, you know, the resolution is, you know, so it doesn't exceed the cost of $25,000. I mean, as, you know, I'm sure you're very well aware, I mean, if it became some, you know, really, really lengthy and long and arduous trial, I mean, it's always possible to go over that number, but we do not anticipate that happening.
Okay. And it's, the preliminary appraisal is 8,000 and the trial-ready appraisal is 8,000. So they're anticipating the balance, it would just be for the trial?
So the preliminary appraisal already was paid for. We've already retained their services, but the way that the general municipal law works, once you retain a consultant, it's on a, it can't exceed a certain amount of money. Here would be $20,000 on a rolling 12-month basis. So based on how much money we've already retained them for, if we anticipate going over $20,000, then we need council approval to do so.
Yeah. Okay, now comes the weird questions. My understanding is Stop &amp; Shop rents the entire property, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So they pay rent for the entire property, so the actual vacancy rate, which now is what, 22%? Does not make any difference. Am I correct in that?
I just want to tread lightly because this is pending litigation and I can't, and I'll be very honest with you, Mr. Lester, I don't remember all the terms of the Stop &amp; Shop lease off the top of my head. I am sorry, I can't look into it and get back to you.
I also think those details should be in executive session. I don't, I don't think we should be discussing them.
We are contemplating whether we're going to executive session to determine these questions. It's pending litigation as the Corporation Counsel just said.
Isn't the lease public record?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so why would we need to go into executive session for something that's public record? I'm not asking anything about the litigation.
I didn't necessarily say that we had to at this point yet. But what I did say was, unfortunately, you know, and I apologize, I don't know all the terms of that lease off the top of my head.
Okay, so the, the equalization rate has gone down, and this is probably a Ray Flank question. I don't know if you can do this. The equalization rate has gone down, relatively speaking. It used to be 3.75 and now it's 2.28. But by the same token, the tax rate has gone up. And so are we basically, by the equalization going down and the tax rate going up, staying about the same place?
I apologize, I can't answer that question. That would be a tax assessor question.
Okay. Do you know if the, the value that we're placing on the property or that would be placed, is that having to do with the equalization rate? Or, you know, I'm just trying to figure it, no?
No, no, I understand, I understand the question, I just don't have the information. I'm not, you know, I mean, combined with the pending litigation and also the fact that, you know, I myself am not a tax assessor, I really cannot answer that.
Yeah, I'm trying to be very careful.
Yeah, they're disputing it, I don't know if we want to say what, what the issue is with their, with their rates, because that's part of what they're litigating, right? I mean, I don't think we should be, we should be answering that.
If we want to go further on the discussion, let's, let's make a motion to go to executive session if we want to go further on this.
Well, if Joe doesn't know the answers, why, what are we going to do in the executive session?
Well, we don't, we don't know what the rest of the questions are.
Well, stop asking questions, he doesn't know the answers, so.
Okay.
Thanks for joining, Joe.
We have questions from the council? John?
No.
Questions from the public? Okay, we'll close that one.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the capital projects fund budget.
Okay, so this is another budget adjustment similar to ones we've done in the past associated with the Critical Infrastructure Project on the North Shore. We have recently received nearly $4 million from Dishes from the state for reimbursement of expenses on the project, and of putting those funds back into our budget as operating capital has been done previously. Ken or I or Ina can field any questions you may have on this one, but it's similar to what we've done multiple times in the past.
Right. Okay, a question from the council? Question from the public? Yes.
Good evening, Linda Giles, Long Beach. I spoke with Mr. Creighton about this, the bulk hitting, the new bulk hitting that's just been installed. When it comes to Monroe Boulevard, it comes in. So the whole area beyond that going east, there's no bulk hitting. So if we do get another hurricane, that same area that was devastated is going to be devastated again. So I spoke with Mr. Creighton and he explained somewhat that we're supposed to be getting more money, but I was wondering if you could make it a little clearer?
Yeah, so the public, the money that we receive is for doing public land. So private land, we do not, we do not do the bulk hitting on private land, and this exists throughout the entire city. So like, use the canals as an example. Half the canal is city land, so we, we put the bulk hitting in, and the other half is private land. So what you do is you move forward with what we can do now, and we do it, but in no way, water will always take the lowest, the lowest route in. But if we don't do what we can do now, it never gets done. So what we do is we do the public areas now, and the private, what we do is we change the code, I believe Scott's here, change the code to the AFF plus 3, which is what we wanted to go to. And when people eventually put in their permits to redo their bulkheads, they have to go to the new height.
But this is the bulkhead that is in front of the emergency room. Who owns that?
Mount Sinai.
Mount Sinai.
Yes.
Okay, so they're live, they have to fix that bulkhead?
Yes.
Is there any demand on them to fix that bulkhead? Because that area is going to get hit again.
Not until it fails again, like, so this is throughout, like I said, throughout the city, everywhere there's private land is, we can't make people tear out bulkheads that are in good condition, but we can make sure that when they permit again to do it, that we tell them that they have to go to the new, the new height by the code.
Okay, just so everybody knows.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public?
I just have one question. Dan, how much, originally we were getting 39 million, and we get, you know, like, every few months we vote to accept. Do you know how much we've received so far and how much more we have to go?
I'd have to ask Ken if he knows the numbers off the top of his head, but I could get that for you, Roy, I'll get that. But we, we have put in several, several adjustments with FEMA, bless you. Several adjustments with FEMA, and we do have a, another adjustment in with them now. You know, it's, it's.
Good for us or bad for us?
Good in that we're getting more money, bad in that the project is costing more. And, you know, and we do have some, we do have some trials with, you know, with, with the project as it is now as far as getting, you know, all the funds that we need. But like I said, we are working with both FEMA and Dishes to make sure that we get, we recover every bit of money that we put into it. We also do have some problems with utilities that we'll have to go after as well at the end of this project.
So it just, at some point, if you could get me those numbers, I'm just trying to keep track of where we are.
Okay. Ken, if you could remember, we got, tried to get to a summary we'll put together. Okay, thanks.
No question?
Yes, James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street. Again, what is the exact area for this project?
The exact area that this is covering, from where to where?
I actually don't know the exact limits. Do you have the limits, Ken? I know it goes to Monroe, I forget where it started, what block it started on, but it. Up in the middle. There it is.
It goes from the boat ramp to Monroe.
From the boat ramp to where? Monroe.
Monroe, okay. So just wanted to say that if you can continue giving all of the detailed updates on this and if there's any major changes that you have a meeting in the community that it will affect and that it has been, it has been affecting for decades. Crystal, myself, and others have been here dozens of times and was a strong part of pushing federal, state, and anybody we can to fix this. Decades of administrations, again, it's, as I said before, it's been rip-brab and just a whole lot of flooding in that particular area, North Park and along the bay. So again, as Crystal would say, if you can continuously give detailed updates and if there's any major differences, can you please have a meeting at the Martin Luther King Center that would allow those families and residents like myself to know what are the immediate changes? So again, thank you, and as you continue this project, we will continue coming because we were a great part of making this happen along with other city council members and continuously asking that every area in the city of Long Beach be protected from flooding and sea level rise. So again, thank you for working on this project.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Okay, we'll close that one, please.
Item number five is a resolution authorizing emergency water service line repairs at City Hall with the lowest bidder.
Okay, so this item is a ratification of an expense associated with emergency water line repairs made here at City Hall. Both the water service line and fire service line that feed the building failed within a few weeks of each other. DPW received three bids for replacement of the lines, and Allen Industries, who performed the work, came in at the lowest, as the lowest responsible bidder at $47,850. I do have Ken Arnold here. If you have any questions, I just do want to note that the reason this was done so quickly and needs to be ratified is that we would have had to shut down City Hall until this work was completed, and so it was of the utmost time, as of the essence of the time to get this done. So again, I have Ken here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions from the council? Roy, you have a question?
Ken, it's kind of bizarre that two lines broke that close together that quickly. Was there a common denominator in this?
It looks like the building settled over time and sheared the pipes both at the foundation walls.
Oh, okay. And so can we expect it on other pipes underneath or is these?
Those are the only two that come in at that location.
Okay, and I can expect it in my house as it settles still, right? How old's your house?
Well, depends how it was put in.
How old's your house?
In the 50s. Glad you're on.
Just a comment, Ken. So it's great that we're able to get three bids that quickly, because sometimes when we try to bid things out, maybe we don't get as many. Is this just a result as it being an emergency? Was there a different bidding process or?
So what we did, the water line failed first in August. We looked at the situation, we were going to call a vendor in that night, but our guys were able to do a patch on the water line. So then we called vendors to do that, give us an estimate for that, and the fire line because we recognized they were right next to each other. While we were waiting to process that bid that came in higher than we anticipated, we were going to go out to a full bid, but then the fire line fails, we went back to the emergency bid and we utilized that because we had to get the job done immediately.
Got it, thank you.
All right, thanks. That's a good question. I had the same kind of thought process. Questions, any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? All right, thank you, we'll close that.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract for design, construction, administration services for the reconstruction of East Bay Drive.
So tonight's a busy night for Ken. This item would allow the city to enter into a contract with DMB engineers and architects to perform design and construction administration services for the full reconstruction of the 300 block of East Bay Drive. The city received, in this situation, 10 proposals for this work, and DMB came in as both the highest rated and the lowest cost. This block is used, used as the primary access road for both an assisted living facility and Mount Sinai's emergency department. It is presently in pretty bad shape and prone to flooding. Awarding the $65,890 contract, DMB is recommended. Again, I have Ken here if you have any questions, but this block is in pretty good, big need of it.
Yeah, I agree. John?
Ken, is this for the entire length of East Bay Drive from Monroe to Neptune?
300 blocks.
It's just the 300 block?
Yes.
Which is.
It goes from Monroe to Lincoln.
Monroe to Lincoln, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other question from the council?
How quickly can this start?
Well, the design would, we kicked off probably by the end of this month. I think it's a eighth-month design period, and then we hope to be in construction this time next year. And also, one of the big issues on this block is the water main. The water main is located in people's front yards. We've had two failures of the water main, that's called private damage, so that's why we're looking, that's why this was prioritized over the other locations.
No question?
Ken, this is just for the planning and drawing it out, what do you think it's going to cost to actually replace it?
Around 1.4.
Thanks.
And that's in the capital plan, that was part of the approved, the bond limits.
Any other questions from the, from the public? Thank you, Ken. We'll close it, thank you, Kerry.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the sewer fund budget.
So this item is another pretty straightforward one. It has to do with the sewer budget and the cost of separation pay. So we had a retirement of an employee as per our contract with CSEA. The sewer budget needs to have its own funding for separation. I do have Ina here if you have any further questions.
Okay. You have a question, Roy?
Yeah, same question, how many people?
I think this is just one, right?
Yeah. One person, all right, thank you.
Was this an unanticipated departure?
We expect some departures, but yeah, this was one that I, we didn't necessarily see coming. I think we expected one, but.
So that's why it wasn't budgeted?
A small amount, right. Any other questions? Questions from the public? All right, we'll close that one too. Thank you.
Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a license agreement to permit tables and chairs on the boardwalk.
So Barrier Beach is the new restaurant on the super block on the boardwalk. They reached out requesting to place two tables on the boardwalk to better serve their customers and to increase their visibility. There is currently a city light pole approximately four feet off their property, and they propose to keep the tables within that four-feet distance so that it doesn't restrict flow on the boardwalk. We have looked at the, the area, we did, they are not one of our concessions, but we did look at using the boardwalk structure, the concession structure for giving an annual fee ascribed for each table and chair. So we matched that. The point here is not to make money on the small business owner, but to support them by charging a nominal fee and entering into agreement to allow them to place tables and chairs outside the premise to help their small business succeed. I do have Joe Lupo up here, myself, and John McNally in the audience if you have any further questions.
Okay, question from the council?
Yeah. Joe, do you know how much they pay for their space from the hotel?
I, no, being that we're not, not their lessor, I'm not, I do not know how much they pay.
And do you know how many tables they have inside?
Also, I do not know.
Okay.
About six, maybe? I thought it was closer to four or five.
It's, they can, they can fit about, I would say, 12 to 15 people in seats inside.
I'm sorry, don't hear you, John.
I would guess it's about 12 to 15 people they can seat inside.
Inside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this basically gives them a 50% increase on their seating.
Four, it's four extra seats.
Four would be about a 25% increase. Four, four seats.
Times two.
No, four seats, two, two seats per table.
Two seats per table.
Yes.
It says for, it says for. It says four chairs for each table.
It says four chairs for each table.
That's a type of, it's two tables with two chairs each. It's actually like a third of a bench sort of sawed off.
All right, then you probably need to correct the agreement, because it says two tables and four chairs each.
The verbiage was a maximum of four chairs per table.
So in other words, they can increase it by... If we catch them with more than four people eating a salad on the boardwalk, is that going to be a problem?
Yes.
It should say to place two tables and up to four chairs. It shouldn't say for each table.
Yeah, it says up to four chairs for each table.
But if there's more than four, then we come down hard on them, right?
Well, Roy will.
Or we charge them another $50 for the extra two seats.
Don't catch me there, dirty. Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? Yes. The teacher. Thank you for your comments earlier. Appreciate them.
I don't know the name of your business.
I work for the city.
Okay. I don't know the name of the business that is interested... Your name, please? ...that is interested in having these extra seats. However, if we are doing it for one business, do you think the other businesses are going to want to do the same?
Well, they are a brick and mortar on the boardwalk. They're in the new development on the boardwalk. Our other concessionaires, we have similar, we've had in the past similar agreements.
So we're going to keep doing this? Is that the idea, if people ask?
I think the idea is for, we want these businesses to do well and to thrive, actually. It's helpful to the city to have businesses succeed rather than fail. So if this is a, this is sort of a nominal fee, the city isn't really looking to make money on it, but...
I'm sorry, the city is not looking to make?
It's not really looking to make a big profit on this, but it's actually to support a new merchant. And everyone else has tables on the boardwalk.
I guess I'm really interested in this, because I walk on Park Avenue, too.
No, what?
I walk on Park Avenue, too.
Okay.
And there are many stores, many restaurants, that have tables on Park Avenue, and it makes it very difficult to walk, because people that have bicycles and are walking their bicycles, or their dogs, which they're allowed to do, one of you must wait. I appreciated that you had the restaurants allowed when it was COVID, but maybe we need to reconsider this.
Well, I mean, this is, we're actually talking about the boardwalk right now?
Yes, and I'm bringing in something else that is also a problem.
I mean, that's certainly something to be entertained, absolutely. Thank you.
It's, or tell no bikes on the sidewalk.
Absolutely, bikes are not allowed on the sidewalk.
Well, they're all walking them.
Well, at least they're walking them. That's a step in the right direction. Pun intended.
I agree. At least they're walking them, but it's difficult. And if you have an older person walking, it's even that much more difficult.
I totally agree with you. I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I have something up there.
Okay, any other comments from the public? All right, thank you. We're going to close that one.
Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a fire department engine.
Okay, so this item requests the purchase of a new pumper fire truck for use by the fire department from RVI Rescue Vehicles for the amount of 1.5 million. NFPA standards call for replacing such vehicles by their 15th year of service. Current lead time for production of the engine is between three and four years, closer to four years, actually. And our current engine is already around its 12th year. So now is the time to make this purchase. The purchase was included in the 2025 capital budget. The fire board has been assessing and scrutinizing this purchase over the last several months and recommends proceeding. Commissioner Miller is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we have questions from the council?
I guess I'll just make a comment. So because this, we knew this was going to have a lot of questions, we met with the police commissioner before the meeting to try to...
Fire.
I'm sorry, fire commissioner. Well, he could have come, too. Just to get as many of these out of the way as possible, because this could have dragged out. So we already got a lot of the information we needed. I guess just some bad news for Lieutenant Piazza, you're not getting your 8-track player in the cab. So...
8-tracks, I like them.
But just wanted to make that, there were a lot of questions about this.
Yeah, correct.
Just want to bring up another one.
I'd like to the questions. One of the big problems with these fire engines is the amount of time it takes once you order it to actually put it together. And we're talking, as Joe put it, 4.1 years. Yeah, actually, to 1,500 days and divided, and it came out exactly to 4.1 years. And luckily, on one way, you know, when you buy it now, you keep the price, but on the other thing, if the tariffs affect it or something else, the price can go up, and there's really no upper limit to what you would have to pay. But it's one of those things, if you don't order now, you get behind. You have to get to the back of the line again. And fire trucks are getting scarce. I don't know why, when you're paying that much money for them, but they're getting scarce. So, you know, it's probably a good thing to do at this point.
And just one more comment, too, is not only do you go to the back of the line, what happens is these engines go up exponentially the longer you wait. Over the past five years, it seems like it's been about 15%, 20% almost every year, the prices of these going up, so that's another reason that it probably wouldn't be fiscally smart to wait.
All right. I agree. I agree with both. Comments from the public? Yes?
James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street. As I always do when it comes to the fire department, again, the fire department, when we look around our city, look around our community, it's life, homes, business, and most importantly, our families. When a disaster strikes, the worst moment of our lives, who are the first ones to run in? It's the fire department. It's the men and women of the fire department. While they're running in, we run out. I would say when you're talking about fire equipment or fire trucks, as we're talking about now, it isn't just metal or money, it's about seconds and lives. A new fire truck isn't something just luxury, it's a vital piece of life-saving technology. An aging ladder truck can fail to reach the third-floor story window, outdated breathing apparatus can malfunction in a smoke-filled room. Every delay, every mechanical failure puts a civilian's life and a firefighter's life at greater risk. So much more that I can say, as I always appreciate what the firefighters do for our city. But I'll end with this. Our fire department is a promise made to every resident that in your darkest hour, help will arrive. We owe it to them, ensure that promise by continuously getting all of the equipment that they need, whether they ride in it, use it, or wear it. Let us support them, give them every grant possible, again, as they continue to save lives and also protect our tax base here, but most importantly, as they continue to save lives any way they can. So again, I thank God for our amazing men and women of the fire department.
Thank you.
Brendan, can I just, Brendan, can I just add something quick? Just something people might be interested to know that's kind of why this is important. Our fire department this year is on track to do, what, 5,300 calls, our fire department. That's almost 15 calls on average per day. Think about that. Fire trucks going out 15 times a day, that is an enormous amount of wear and tear on the equipment. And this truck's getting up, it's getting long in the tooth. Also went through Sandy, too. So that's, you know, this isn't just somebody wants a new toy. This is an important piece of equipment that we need for our firefighters to be able to do their job and to keep everybody in this city safe.
Thank you. One more comment, it's also a lot of wear and tear on the firefighters, so we appreciate that as well. Guys and girls, thank you. Any other comments? I will close that one.
Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance authorizing financing costs of planning for traffic safety improvements at the maximum total cost thereof of $236,390. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held on October 21st at 7:00 PM.
Did you go to the next one?
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amending the charter of the city of Long Beach reassessment levy collection of taxes. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held on October 21st at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. These are for publication only? There will be a hearing on it? And you'll have every opportunity to ask and opine? Okay.
Onto the voting.
I'd like to move that we block vote and approve items 1, 2, 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, and 11.
I second that. Guess you guys know what you're talking about.
Well, I asked.
It's a motion to block vote and introduce, correct?
I second the motion.
Yes, block vote and approve.
I second it.
Mr. Lester seconded, yes. Okay. Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes. That's three, right?
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to retain an appraisal consultant for real property valuation services. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second? Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
I read the resolution and the attached 120-something pages to it, and to be honest, I can't quite understand how this is happening. And it's a shame, and I'm not, Joe, I wouldn't expect you to know. Ray Clamton is really the expert on this, so at this point, I just don't feel I can vote yes on this.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for design, construction, administration services for the reconstruction of East Bay Drive. Who will introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
This is another item that was put on. It's regarding a contract that we haven't seen, and it's probably not a complicated contract, but I tend not to vote for things on contracts that I haven't seen. So I'm voting no on this.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
I'm voting yes on this, and an important reason has been already explained, that this street is in dire need of repair. And Ken has already explained some of the ramifications of the contract, so I'm voting yes on this.
Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement to permit tables and chairs on the boardwalk. Who will move and introduce the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second? Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
When I looked at this, I, you know, I kind of estimated what a company is paying for the space, 15 places, and their top building, I think it's probably about $96,000 a year, and we're increasing their seating by 50%. So you take the $96,000, you figure half of that goes for the kitchen and the other half for seating, and basically, we're giving them the equivalent of $24,000 worth of seating for $200 a year. Well, with the chairs, you know, it's $400. I agree we should help the businesses, but you want to know something? The taxpayers need help, too. And people making money off city property should pay a fair amount. When you're gaining approximately $24,000 worth of property and paying $400, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayer, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
I wish success to the new business. We love our new businesses here in Long Beach. It's actually a very cool little spot. You should check it out. Our local businesses already receive high taxes, so anything we can do to support these small businesses, of course, I'm in favor of yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yeah, congratulations to Barrier Beats. I understand your concern, Roy, but, I mean, I don't believe in counting other people's money, especially the private sector, not a city concession. And from being in restaurant business, owning over 30 restaurants in the last 30 years, those numbers you spewed out are just completely incorrect, so I could talk to you about that backstage if you want after later, but I'm totally for it. Roy, I don't know where you're going to go. No fireworks now, no arts in the plaza, no concessions, and now you can't go to Barrier Beats!
No salads.
No salads for Roy.
No salads for Roy. Maybe they'll let you in Gino's.
All right. I'm going to vote yes.
President Finn?
Yeah, Roy, I'm a little dubious on those numbers myself. I mean, but we want these businesses to succeed. They don't have a lot of space inside. I think it's going to benefit the public as well to be able to eat out on the boardwalk when it's nice, and I think that attracts people to Long Beach, and that helps everybody else in Long Beach, including the citizens who live here, who, if the businesses pay, if they do well, they pay more tax, and we do okay. So I'm voting yes, and I'll have a slice of pizza with you in Gino's if that's the only place that's going to let you in. I don't know what's going to happen.
The city manager's personnel report has been filed by the city clerk. Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Who will second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes. You do that so ceremoniously, I... Yes, I agree. I agree with that comment. Yeah, right, now you keep the box. Take the cannoli. I mean, oh, I'm sorry.
I grew up in Long Beach. On my corner, there was...
I think you just need to move the microphone a little bit closer.
I'm very sorry.
I can hear you, but you'll hear...
I know they can't, and I want them to.
You'll get the cat calls in no time, so...
I grew up in Long Beach. I'm here 75 years. Yes, that's how old I am. Actually, I'm 76. But I'm angry because... But I'm angry because on the corner of my block, there was a lot, and we used to love to play in that lot. But every single summer, that lot was mowed down, so we didn't have the weeds growing up, so we didn't have cats hiding in the weeds, and we didn't have all the mosquitoes that usually come from weeds that are wet, et cetera. The town did a great job. I go see my doctor twice a month, and I go, he's on 440, I guess it's called Bay Drive. It's the Nassau, the South Nassau Hospital's building in town.
Very nice.
When I turn in on Lincoln Boulevard to drive into his parking lot, there's an area that has not been mowed, I'm going to say four months, probably longer. It's grassy, it's disgusting, and I don't know what's growing in there, and I don't know what's running wild in there. But it's a great place for rats and everything else. Why isn't that being taken care of?
Do we know?
You're going to tell me it's not yours, and you're right, it's not. But how about getting on the case of that hospital to take care of it? And I know that it's known because I see cops parking their cars and hanging out in the parking lot there. So they know that it's an area that is not being taken care of, and I would think that our police officers in town are smart enough to talk about it. What is in that area? I don't want to get out of my car and run into a rat. I really don't. Creeps me out.
Can I ask a question? Are you talking about the, the area just...
The grassy area.
Just, just to the west of the parking area?
Yes.
The retention basin, it's meant to catch water, and it's meant, that's meant to grow like that, but I, I'll talk to them about maintaining it, but that is meant to be like that. That's a retention basin.
You got to do something about it. There's no reason for all of that to be going on. And if it's, and if it's a catch basin for water, what else is in there? I see enough people walking their dogs and throwing garbage bags, and I'm thankful that they have the garbage bags. Needs to be cleaned out.
Good. All right, thank you.
And they don't tend to be people that do things unless someone's on their case.
Yeah, definitely look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Fritcher?
I grew up in Long Beach. My husband and I graduated from Long Beach High School. I'm not going to tell you what years because it's my prerogative not to. It was always my dream to come back to Long Beach. We raised our family in Oceanside. I taught in the Oceanside Middle School for 18 years. I was a past president of PTA, helped to run the intramural soccer program. I have always felt that my attention should be to the community that I live in. Long Beach is my hometown, so my dream was fulfilled when we moved back to Long Beach. On Saturday, I participated in the Irish Day Parade, which was something that in the 60s and the 50s, we did not have something of that scale, and it really was quite a wonderful, wonderful day. But the question that I have, and what troubles me so much, is that members of the city council did not march together as a unit, as representatives of the city council. Two of our members carried the city council banner, and they marched in front of one political group who was in front of the other political group. The rest of the city council members made it their decision to march with their political affiliation. My opinion is that on a day like that, where it is a community event, and you are making an attempt to show unity in our beautiful city of Long Beach, you owed it to the population to march as city council members and to leave your personal political affiliations out of the entire scenario. Thank you.
Thank you. Two points on that. First of all, from my understanding, and I think the parade is 35 years, that it would, there was no city council marching, there was no line of march entry for elected officials until I think last year was the first time, from what I've been told about the parade. And I marched in that parade many years myself with, with the NYPD Pipes and Drums. The second point was that there wasn't the intent to march as a council, but a flyer was put out on Facebook, on social media, that one of the candidates was going to march with the Dems by the Sea, with other political officials. And I personally think that, that person has the right to do that. They want to march with the, with the political party, that, that's fine with me. It may not be fine with you, but it's... Right, so that person said they were going to march with the Dems by the Sea. So when I read that, I said, well, then I guess the council's not going to march, so I'll march with the, I'll march with the Republicans, and that's why I did that. And I don't think anybody should read anything more into it. The Dems by the Sea were allowed to march, the Republicans were allowed to march. A city council candidate who wants to march with the Dems by the Sea has every right to do that. And I, I respect that right, but then I chose my right to march with the Republicans. So I, you know, if, if the Dems by the Sea didn't say they were going to march with the city council member, I probably would have marched with the council.
Could you call them up?
Call up who? Excuse me?
What person was it?
That, I don't, that's, that's his business, not mine.
I'll address that. Never said that, that he's talking about me, that I was going to march. Said I was going to be there. I was going to be at the parade. Guess what? I was at the parade. I have always marched with the city council. I personally, and listen, Brendan has a right not to, I appreciate that, but I personally wanted to put the city before I would march with the party. That was my personal feeling, so...
I just, then I'd like to know why you put that flyer out saying you were going to march with the Dems by the Sea.
Say that.
Well, anybody can check it out on Instagram or Facebook where you put it out. So, I mean, that's the point. I mean, we're really making a mountain out of a molehill. It was a beautiful day, as you said. Yeah, so, all right, thank you.
So let me, let me just add something for edification here. So I'm the one guy who made it very clear they were marching as the city council. I sent an email to everyone early in the week saying that I was marching as the city council, and I asked to have the city council banner there. I didn't know if I was going to do it alone, but, so there was, it was pretty clear that at least one person was marching as the city council.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Did you have a banner when you got there, John?
It eventually showed up.
We weren't even listed in the parade.
As I said before, historically, elected officials didn't really have places in there. It was political parties marched.
That's not the way it's been for the last few years.
Okay, we'll have to take it up with the AOH, but I think they put on a great parade. I was very happy with the day, and I think most people were, too. I'm sorry that you weren't.
James Hodge, I'll quickly say this, that, one, you shouldn't do something just because someone else is doing it. You guys should have marched together and forgot about party and thought about city. You should have marched together. That's my spiel on that. You know, if you want to look at Instagram and Facebook, that's that. I, I, I really want to say to, when you, when you talk about party and, and how you support your party so much, I think you should be calling the Republican Party Mr. Cairo and Mr. Marotti, and in, in the situation that happened, I want to tell you, because it was representing the 4th Legislative District, there's a young man that's been missing since April. A lot of people don't know the story, and he went in to the water to go swimming, as he did before, to prepare for a triathlon, and we never seen him since. And so, Mr. President, I, I submitted my paperwork to finish off what Petros started. And when I put my paperwork in to give Long Beach and the legislative 4th District an opportunity to have two parties representing each other, there came a lawsuit. Got a big mail in my home. I got served with papers, being sued, you know, behind the scenes by the Republican Party. So I said to you, President, when we talk about party, let's look at moral things. We was trying to give all of the residents in this district an opportunity to vote for two different people that can campaign and compete against each other, and the Republican Party sued. And they won in court. It was filed in time. They won in court to keep a family hurting, to keep a family in pain, by keeping a young man that is presumed to be dead from...
Who's making that presumption?
Well, when you, you're a detective, you need to speak to some of your detectives and speak to some of your friends. Don't take my time, please. But you can read the stories, there's a whole lot of them.
I'm not presuming that...
I hope you stopping it when he's talking. Go ahead, you want to talk?
I said I'm not presuming that he's dead.
Okay.
And I, I don't, really don't like discussing something like this because it's really not pertinent to this city council meeting, but go ahead.
It's pertinent because it is the 4th Legislative District, which Long Beach is a large part of that. And so the, the, the thing is that there are two I filed to be a candidate, and the Republican Party, your party, sued me, and they won in court. And so I say to anybody else that's out there that you sued for Petros, for me to be on the ballot. And I'm going to stand by my cowork, I'm going to stand by my friend. I didn't make the ballot, but I'm going to honor his life and legacy, and I ask everybody, I even asked you, President, to go ahead and support Petros, because the, everybody that sees this, 50 days you guys had to sue me to keep me off the ballot? That's sad. Kind of morals is that? We filed in time. Check the record out. And so I say everybody should vote for Petros in honor of the disgraceful thing that the Republican Party did to keep him on the ballot and keep his family in pain and hurt.
Thank you. Obviously, a judge made a decision. I don't know why a judge made a decision. Ron Pagani?
I respect the law. I'm telling everybody vote for Petros, you didn't have to sue.
A judge made a decision.
You didn't have to sue, though.
Thank you, sir.
Keep going, keep going, too. Vote for Petros.
Good evening, gentlemen. All right, so I'm here because I don't know if Governor Hoagal got, got the letter, right? He didn't send a certified. All right, it's a mistake. I'm asking this council to send the letter again, certified.
Absolutely.
And I think everybody who's involved with this wind farm and possibility coming through Long Beach should be notified. Right, I mean, I mean, you, you guys are notified. You don't have to get a letter. But there are other individuals that are, should be notified. You tell me if I'm wrong. I'm going to give you a list.
I certainly hope I'm going to be notified, yes.
Well, you're notified now.
[laughing]
I don't have to send you a letter.
Okay.
It's on the books right now. But anyway, you need to CC this letter, certified, CC it to Bruce Blakeman, Nassau Executive. We're coming through Nassau County, right? We're in Nassau County. I need this man to get a letter, certified. I need John Ferretti, Town of Hempstead Supervisor, because we're going through Town of Hempstead, too. He needs a letter. Patrick Mullet, Mullet, Mulaney, 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 excuse me, Nassau County.
He's our legislator from the...
Right. He needs a letter, just to be notified that he knows what's going on. National Grid is another one. They know all about cables. What do they think about it? Okay? Equinor, the builder, the guy who's building this stuff, he needs a letter. He needs a letter. Same letter that you're giving to the governor. McGinty, Mayor McGinty of Island Park, he needs a letter. I sound like Red Buttons here, never had a dinner. He needs a letter. The Climate Institute of Washington DC, who wrote the supergrid study, the only study in America, they need to be notified. CC them. And the guy who started this thing over again, I thought it was over when President Trump won. The guy who introduced it back, he needs a letter. Donald Trump needs a letter. In the letter, it states, people, that the dangers of coming through an infrastructure like ours, we have an old infrastructure with iron pipe and copper leads to every home. They will be destroyed, there is no stopping the heat and the breaking of the casings of these things. It doesn't work, and that's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And one more thing I want to bring out, I have a lot of things, I've got five seconds. We need a mosquito study throughout the city. The canals are, forget it. You, you can't stay outside. And the canals, I saw the kids swimming, jumping and swimming. I never saw kids swimming in these canals. They're polluted. The old tests are polluted. When was the last test? I spoke to the city manager, okay? We don't even know. We need a test for swimming or eating the crabs or clams in there. Yeah, I'm serious. And fish, the fluke are in there. Can we eat them?
How they taste?
Phew, they glow?
[laughing]
I'm just saying, the people who live on these canals need to know, we need to know, so I'll get back to you on that. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. We're out of contestants. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Appreciate it. Democracy in action here in Long Beach. Thank you for all your input.
And great job by our new city clerk.
That's right, Kerry, thank...
Our first meeting.
Yes, thank you, John, yes. I meant to do that, Kerry. John beat me to the punch. All right.
Kerry?
Johnny, you're in the third row.